So, since we last met, we've received a lot of budget questions from our board members, as well as the survey that we did put out to parents. We did receive some feedback. And again, going back to the surveys that we had asked our staff to complete, which we received feedback. So what we tried to do, as we always do in the second session of the budget workshop, is to answer some of those questions. We're not going to answer everyone's questions, so if you're watching at home, or you're in the audience, or even if you're a board member, your question might not be answered right now because we're trying to make sure that we have everything put in place to answer questions. Some are -- and not every question was created equal, shall we say. So some questions require a little bit more research and definition. So we will get -- if we don't get to your question today, we will definitely get to it by next Wednesday. So that is our goal. But I think we got to most of what has been requested of community members and board members. So I will say this for, again, the people watching at home. You're seeing new technology. This was all donated. This was not bought with Board of Education money. Just want to make that very clear, because I know it's a budget time, and I know that could be stressful for people. These new gadgets are not bought with Board of Education funds. Just, again, my little caveat. So moving forward, I kind of set up as a question-answer type of scenario. We always get asked a question about why are the buses empty, especially at the high school. Number one, because high school students don't like to ride the bus. So that's the Claire definition and Claire question, and of course, students begin to drive. The challenge is that we can't take buses off the road at that time for high school students, because we are required under state statute to have a seat for every student who's eligible to ride a bus. So that's the basic answer, number one. Secondly, even if we could, there is no cost savings. Our transportation contract is based on the elementary buses and the number of buses for the elementary runs that are necessary, which is 59 full-size buses and two minis. So regardless if we use those buses for high school or not, we're still paying for those buses. So we -- it doesn't make sense to reduce the buses. We're already using them, or we're paying for them, and it helps decrease the route run time in the morning. We also looked at consolidating the middle school and high school runs, putting them on the same schedule, putting the middle school and high school students together. That would be an additional addition of buses. So it would require a minimum of three buses that would have to be added to make that happen. So there wasn't a cost savings. There was actually a cost increase. What is VersaTrans My Stop software? This was in our budget that we -- that we're requesting, and this is software to assist parents and students in knowing the time the bus will arrive at their home. It's an efficiency tool also, since we're going to be reducing or eliminating the clerk at -- or receptionist at central office. It reduces the number of phone calls that we get on a daily basis. We won't have anybody to answer those phone calls, because we're going to be going automated. So therefore, that we don't -- we have to be efficient in our approach. So this would allow parents to have a better understanding, so we'd have less calls coming into transportation or into the no-longer-receptionist position. It's a mobile-enabled device also. And that doesn't make sense. It should be a mobile-enabled device. I was little, and I had my Italian on or something. I don't know. Putting my modifier on.
You have to read from right to left.
Exactly. Thanks. My side kicked over here. All right. Athletics. Why do we need a team at each high school for every sport? It's a question, again, some of you in the audience are scratching your heads where these -- you know, these are questions that are always asked. Guidelines need to be followed in order to combine teams, and there are strict guidelines. And unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, our teams at both high schools are able to continue to run, or to field teams, or to suit teams, so to speak. And the guidelines are for each different sport. So what might be the guideline for football is certainly not the guideline for field hockey. So I think that that's something that we always look at. Our athletic directors looked at this all the time. We do have still the co-op for hockey for Lyman Hall, but we could not co-op Sheehan in Lyman Hall, because there's, again, too many students that are eligible to play. And we can't co-op and then turn students away that were eligible to play. Medical expenses. We were asked about the increase. Our projected medical insurance increase is an 8 percent. And that is actually, last year, we had -- by the end of the year, it was about a 5.5 percent increase. So this year, we're estimating 8 percent. Tomorrow, there is an insurance meeting, so we're hoping that that number will change. Each percentage goes down. Mr. Arum and I, you know, he calculated it's a little over $100,000 for each percentage it drops. So that's good news. So we're all hoping for about a 5 percent drop. But we all know that that won't happen. So we're hoping for at least a percent drop tomorrow. The other insurance numbers that I just wanted to share with everyone, because I think it's important to note, and I do want to show respect to our staff, is that we have insurance in our budget is made up of a variety of things: medical insurance, other health insurance. In that same line item, which is a 200 account, we also have unemployment. So that was reduced, because we don't anticipate the need for that $200,000. So our actual increase in insurance costs were $592,517. With the negotiations with the teacher, this teacher's contract this year, in reducing the waiver, that was a savings of $428,400. So our actual insurance increase this year, as a town Board of Ed budget, is $164,117. So that's a pretty low increase, when you factor in all of the people that are in our organization. And again, it's attributed, in a large part, due to the waiver savings from the teacher negotiated contract. So I just wanted to bring that forward, because sometimes when we negotiate contracts, people lose sight of the things that the district does benefit from financially, and that was one of them. And I do want to make certain that the public knows that that was a value-added aspect as we planned our budget this year. So I just wanted that to be said. If you have questions, please just interrupt me. And if there are questions from the audience, again, I do have the wireless microphone. So please feel free. Oops. Sorry.
One of the other questions that comes up every year is, why don't we offer an early retirement incentive plan? And the fact behind that is there's not really a savings enjoyed by that, because there is a severance payment for teachers who retire. And so if we were to use the anticipated costs and savings from this year, we anticipate that there would be an approximate $328,700 in savings. That would be the difference between somebody who's at the top end of the pay scale and somebody that you're bringing in at a lower salary. So that's an estimate of what we believe would be the case. The severance payment, on the other hand, is $360,850. And so the difference between the two, it actually costs us money when somebody retires. This will change as time progresses, because right now, for teachers hired prior to 1987, the cap on the severance payment is $40,000. For teachers hired between 1987 and 2012, the cap on the severance is $25,000. For teachers hired after 2012, there is no severance payment. The contract has also added in that somebody has to have been a full-time active employee for 10 years or more in order to get a severance payment. So these costs will decrease, but at this point in time where we are, you can see that there's not actually a savings there. And so that sums up why an early retirement incentive doesn't really help.
The next was regarding the resource officers. We are still requesting these. We did have the conversation with the police chief last year. It was determined that this would still be a request from the Board of Education, even though I think the board agreed, and even some counselors agreed it needed to be in the police budget. I will be meeting again with the police chief this Friday to have a conversation. These are bullets, to be honest. They are cut and paste from last year's presentation. So the only thing I did add, because one of -- no pun intended, please, and, gosh, knock on wood. But Kathy did ask and made sure that I did put in there that the officers are armed and in uniform, in terms of a question about the SROs, are they wear uniforms, are they armed? So they are armed and uniformed officers. So it's not where they're plainclothes police officers. They are there. Their primary purpose, though, is not to be checking people's bags and, you know, doing TSA stuff, but to actually be working as a community member, developing and fostering a sense of community within schools. So again, we just wanted to put this out there, because everything you see tonight will go on our website tomorrow morning and be sent out to all staff, too. So it helps answer questions for people who might not be here.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So you are meeting with the police chief. You said this Friday. So can I assume he is not putting this in his budget?
I do not want to assume, because their budget's not due yet. It's not due for another two weeks to the mayor. So I can't say. I haven't said it. We haven't had a conversation.
Okay.
If I get the good news that he did, then we're two -- over $200,000 lower, so our bottom line would be well under 3 percent.
Well, I don't know if it actually sends a stronger message to the mayor and town council that it's that important to both the police chief, the police department, and the school district. Obviously, you're not going to double fund, but, okay. Thanks.
So the next item is food services. Ed, did you want to take this one?
Question. Is the food service projecting a deficit for next year? If so, why is it not budgeted? Food service, right now, is projecting a $118,000 deficit. As you know, we report on a monthly basis on what the food service is doing this year. We do not budget for it, because the Board of Ed would have to decide to either budget for it or go out to bid and require a break-even points from the vendors. National School Lunch Program is required service, the school district, to families who meet the federal guidelines. But as you know, we're at -- Alan and I are working diligently to cut costs and increase the food quality, which we have, and to make more people, more children affected and eat at the schools, which we're doing.
And I understand the spirit of efficiency. I only gave you every other page to keep you focused.
You wanted to see if we were awake.
Yeah, I was just wanting to see if you were awake. Come on, people. So I will be certain to get you the alternating pages. It's that copier when it's set to certain things for efficiency purposes. The reason why the last bullet is there, to be honest, that was a question that was asked by parents in the parent survey. Why do we have to offer a free reduced lunch program? And so I just wanted to make that clear to the public that maybe is watching this or receives my emails with updates, that it is a federally mandated program, and we do have an obligation to serve students who are in need. And I didn't want to put it on there, because it does become a document that the federal government could probably find, and obviously, they know about anyway, is that we actually make money off of the federal lunch program. So we wouldn't want to do away with that, to be honest, as we move forward. Another question was about Perkins Grants. In the Perkins Grants, are grants that are used, are usually granted each year in the area of career technical education. And it also covers ag science. This year, our grants, if you look in the section, the end of the book, I believe, section six or seven in our book, it shows that we do not have funding for staff next year in the Perkins Grant, because we've used up the money that we can apply for in that particular account, based on the ag science teacher. So we're not eligible to reapply, because you're only able to do that one year. You get a certain percentage, and then you're not eligible. The other grants have not been released. Each year, the Perkins Grants will be released, usually early spring, and that's when our curriculum department writes those grants. So all of our curriculum staff works very hard on getting those grants out. So we can't put anything in there budgeted, because we don't, we don't know what they're going to be. We're not sure if there's going to be grants available, number one, and what their focus might be. So some of our Perkins Grants have been for -- the food truck was a Perkins Grant, as well as we've had grants for the school store at Lyman Hall. We've had additional food services opportunities, programming from there, some robotics grants, funding. So those are the areas that we usually apply for. Enrollment. This is as of last Friday. So you get to watch.
It really is every other. It really is every other.
It is. Again, it's a teaching strategy. Mr. Vado would have loved it tonight. He would have been enthralled. What we wanted to show is where our increases and decreases are by level. So overall, our net reduction next year, we're estimating a negative two students in the district, which today, when we shared that with the South Portland people, they're like, oh, my gosh, you're so lucky, because they're losing many more students. Our biggest increase is at the high school, and that's anticipating an increase because of the ag science program, and plus, we have our seventh, our eighth graders going in. It's a little bit larger class going into ninth grade. Our middle school reduction is because of the bubble. So we're seeing that shift bubble from a little bit of the middle school to the high school there. 3-5 actually is causing a challenge to me, because right now, based on where the students came into our district, we technically should be adding two teachers to our budget for the 3-5 level, to maintain a class size of no more than 23. We're waiting on that right now, because there's always fluidity over the next few months. And so if we need to add, we will. But at this point, we're holding off, and also, we want to look at our other levels. The middle school with that reduction, I just want you to know that we cannot -- it's kind of unfortunate it shows that high of a number, because the reality is that the middle school class sizes are higher than any other class sizes predominantly in the district. So we do, we will address that. We've shared with some of you that we are trying to work on a way to do that. We're just not prepared to share that at this point, but we do need to address it. They are, you know, we oftentimes hear of different levels, and there's always, you know, it's competition, who has more students. And the fact is that the middle school numbers, we have a real bubble, especially at DAG. We have 269 students at one grade level. They'll be moving into eighth grade next year. We have two teams. So no way, by any means, I don't want any board member leaving here tonight saying, oh, jeez, 63 kids down at the middle school, we could cut teachers and save money. Uh-uh. If anything, we need to redistribute some other teachers to that school level to figure out how we're going to help reduce those numbers. And then you'll see the K2 is down a little bit, and then the pre-K, we're up, will be up 15 students. One of the things that we see, obviously, it's great that we have additional pre-K students coming into our district. We also know that we, and this is, it's one of those good news, bad news things, when they came to us as kindergartners, we didn't have, we received them, and they came sometimes with challenges that had presented themselves earlier, but we didn't know about them. So now, because we have them coming in at four years old, we're bringing, those children are coming to us, and we have opportunities to address their areas of need sooner, but that increases, obviously, our service responsibilities. The good news is that we believe that if we address it at an earlier age, then hopefully the services that are necessary at an older age will be decreased. But that's where we see a lot of our shift in our budget, and it's a natural consequence for providing services at a different level.
Do you know the total, off the top of your head, for 15, 16-year enrollment? And the other reason I ask, I thought there was a year where there was an abnormal kind of increase in enrollment.
We did. 1652. It's in the book. Yeah, we did have an abnormal increase. That was actually in 15, 16. The projection was actually, excuse me, no, it was 14, 15. We had 59, 46 as a projection, and we ended up with 6,044. Again, these numbers are volatile, as you know. We, the numbers are very different from October 1st to just recently. They've increased. And so we do see some turnover in some of our rental units, starting in October 1st. We have developed a really strong relationship with our real estate agents, so we have been encouraging them to let us know and let principals and ask, let principals know, but also ask people who are moving into town to go visit their principals sooner in the process, rather than after they've already moved in, or the truck is pulling up to the house. So giving us awareness and warning. But the numbers are still volatile. I know that we're kind of in a unique position, because most districts, and there was an article just about a month and a half ago, most districts have lost at least 50 to 100 students over the course of a year. I know Meriden has lost at least 100 students. So we're kind of, we're holding our own, so to speak. Other questions? Any questions? Okay. This is an item that I already shared with the board, but I wanted to repeat. I think it bears repeating, and I wanted to put the financial implications next to it. We are recommending the reduction in our commitment to magnet, the two magnet schools, Thomas Edison and Wintergreen, going from 60 slots, or spaces, or seats at Wintergreen to 55, and going from 21 to 17 at Thomas Edison. So you have the savings here, which obviously comes out to over $47,000 worth of savings. Another question that came up in a variety of settings was about open choice. How many students do we have participating in open choice? We have, excuse me, we have 20, we have 12 students. I apologize. I think I said before, earlier, Karen, 11. We have 20, 12 students. We have seven at Lyman Hall, five at Sheehan, as of our report this year. There's graduating students going, leaving Sheehan next year, so we'll have two students at Sheehan and seven at Lyman Hall. We are not, at this time, accepting new students. This was a board decision back in, I believe it was 2009, 10, my first year here, when there were concerns about enrollment and about having additional teachers necessary for students we were bringing into the district. It is 3,000 per student, approximately. There are bonuses, quote-unquote, if you take a certain amount of students, a school can get an additional amount of money if it's awarded, or if it's available at the end of the year. Just any questions? Smart Start. How much money do we receive, and how many students are enrolled? We have two classrooms at Highland. There are two full-day classes, and we have two classes at Moses Y. They're $150,000 each. And each classroom, actually, I believe this number might be off. It should be, I think it's 16 students a class, but it could go up to 18 students per class. We are not eligible for any additional classrooms. So we do get the funding continuously for these classes, but at this time, and even if we were, I don't think we would take them on at this point, because we need to get our footing around, and our arms around, having these little cherubs full-time in the schools that we have. Carrie's going to take the next one.
So the rationale for the early childhood coordinator, with the increase to the pre-K by two classes each over the last three years, our preschool population has expanded. This position would be responsible for the oversight of all the district pre-K classes and all of our students. With the Smart Start grant, we need to begin the accreditation process for NIAC. And that would, that person would facilitate that process with the principals and with the pre-K teachers. It would, that person would also facilitate all of the pre-K curriculum that needs to be written and aligned for a smooth transition into kindergarten, first and second grade. They would bridge with the integrated preschool as well, provide all the professional development needed for the teachers in those areas, and really be knowledgeable in the birth-to-three process, early identification, how to best help all the services and all the needs of that age population, and be able to coordinate all of the screening and the placement process for preschool. It's an important position to have, having that knowledge base of early childhood education, and to be able to assist the principals with creating a building focus for the transition of pre-K into kindergarten, first and second grade. Rob Arcero and Vicki Reed have the Smart Start preschools in their school. I don't know if they want to add any additional information as to the necessity of that particular program.
Just an additional note. Wait. Yes, I'm a personal. What do you want to say? Sorry. I have to. I have my Oprah. Here you go.
That's like not even a cultural reference anymore, saying Oprah. She hasn't been on TV for how many years? I'm showing my age.
Yes, it'll be Ellen DeGeneres instead. Good evening, everybody. Rob Arcero, proud principal of Moses Y Beach. Just a couple points to expand on the NIAC accreditation. Oftentimes, it's seen as a finish line or an endpoint. I want to just clarify that that's an ongoing phenomenon. There's portfolio maintenance, the professional development that Mrs. Latour mentioned that goes into that. So it's something that lives on long after you cross that finish line and celebrate the accreditation. There's a maintenance factor to it. In addition to looking at with expanded slots, there is a need to really systematize what it looks like when we bring in students and carefully consider what the placement looks like across all of the sections. So, you know, having that oversight and ability to build capacity across all the schools and the programs would be extremely beneficial, to say the least.
Can I just ask, how long do we know we'll have the Smart Start grant?
Smart Start. Yeah, it's a.
Smart Start grant.
Yeah. Do we? The Smart Start grant had been guaranteed initially, two years ago, for approximately 10 years.
Okay.
So that was the initial award.
Wow.
Ms. Reed, anything you would like to add, or?
The only other thing I would add to what Mrs. Latour said would be the need for professional development. We have very young, great teachers, but they need guidance, and it's hard when we do our district professional development. We're looking at K2, and sometimes pre-K gets left off, and their needs are much different than the needs of K12. And so this person would help facilitate that.
Ms. Lovett?
One of the questions that often comes up are, why does Wallingford have so many administrators? And would we, and if we were able to have, what would we, what would we do, or could we manage to get by with one principal for each sister-school relationship? And the question, when you're aware of the many duties of a principal, is something that wouldn't be possible at all. So if we take something as simple as the evaluation load of every administrator, as this chart illustrates, it's a significant load. So I'm going to really skip from the first column to the last column, and you're going to see that our elementary administrators have an average of 48 people that they're evaluating. Now, the chart breaks it down into how many people are evaluating, that are certified people versus non-certified people, but that's still 48 evaluations that an elementary principal is doing. As you read down the chart, middle school, on average, are doing 41 evaluations. High school are doing, on average, 31. The curriculum counseling department's doing, on average, 23. And our adult education director is doing 27 evaluations. Another thing that this chart doesn't show is that for the certified evaluations, this isn't a one-and-done process. So in industry, very often, you're evaluating and observing throughout the year, but not on a formal basis. You're just noticing the work that somebody does, and you write it up once a year. According, with the CED, the Connecticut State Mandated Teacher Evaluation Program, even with the adaptations that Wallingford has been able to make, this is a process that requires initial goal-setting at the beginning of the year, which is a minimum of a half-hour conference with a teacher, a mid-year conference, which is approximately a half-hour, formal observations that often go, that often are accompanied by a pre-conference, that are most definitely accompanied by a post-conference, several informal observations, and in addition, often a review of practice, where a teacher will sit down with their evaluator and review their practices, perhaps related to assessment, or providing appropriate and meaningful feedback to students. The review of practice could be on any variety of ideas or topics. But it's a process for each person. Oh, and then the end-of-the-year conference, of course, the final evaluation. So this is a process that I would suggest, at minimum, takes six hours over the course of the year for each person, and I think that six hours is probably a very conservative figure. figure. So that would be just one area that is, would be drastically impacted. So if you were now to have one administrator shared between the sister schools, just from the evaluation piece, you've created something that's impossible for somebody to do. And then to also effectively manage the academic needs, the social needs, the emotional needs, the issues that might come up related to bullying, and they need a prompt and attentive response, the issues that a parent comes in and has a concern and wants to meet with a principal regarding some academic concerns that they have, and there's just many, many, many things in a day that a principal has to keep up on. This is just one piece that illustrates the impossibility of sharing one administrator between sister schools. Shawna?
What's, excuse me, what's the ideal number that a principal, number of people that a principal would evaluate?
There's not a recommended ideal number, but in industry, and we just talked about this last night at the Systemwide PTAC meeting, some of the parents there were saying that in industry, it's recommended between eight and 10 people would be a maximum load that's recommended in industry. So we don't, we don't have the luxury of being able to go in that direction. This is the best that we're able to accommodate at this time.
I do want to point out that the sister-school partnership, just for those in TV land, none of our board members asked this question, so I just want to make sure it's very, very clear, that this did not come from our Board of Education members. This did come from our parent survey. And again, we want to make sure that we answer questions and people do watch this, but I also want to prepare my board members that when they're at, you know, East Side Market and they get asked ordering their Prevalone, you know, why can't we have two, one administrator for two sister schools? They'll be prepared to get their pound of Prevalone and answer the question.
And just from a special education perspective, the three special education administrators in the district, we also have between 22 and 24 formal staff members who we formally evaluate. We do not do as many non-certified staff. We do between one and seven, but in addition to our formal evaluation requirements or obligations, we do, the coordinators do between 22 and 24 out-of-district students in which they case-manage. I case-manage 10 students, and it's not uncommon that for the students in which I or the coordinators case-manage, we have multiple PPTs or monthly conferences or six-week program reviews on. It's a very time-consuming process. We have students that go to over 25 to 30 different facilities, so that's, that's, that's where we, we stand.
Dean of Students, this was a new term that was presented this year to all of you, and I think that if you just heard that, and listened to the information, especially about our elementary schools, and they're one individual in a building, and they're obviously not only working on evaluation every day, but also dealing with the many needs of a building, not only physical needs of the human beings, but also the maintenance needs. If a boiler's not working, they're contacting maintenance, they're dealing with those, all those issues. And as I was thinking about this, as we're, I was putting this slide together over the weekend, I was thinking of a scenario that we use oftentimes in our administrator interview process, which is the 50,000 things that go wrong in the morning, and how do you prioritize? And that is really the craziness that our, especially our elementary administrators are dealing with on a daily basis. So, the recommendation that we were putting forth was to create a position that would be called the Dean of Students, one for either side of town, that would work with our eight elementary schools, and that person would be paid at a salary scale that would be just above the top seat teacher's salary, but below any other administrator level, because they'd be only working a school-year calendar. So the budget number you see, and I don't have it in front of me, but we'll, we'll take a look at that shortly, if you take that number, that really, if you cut that in half, and you subtract about $10,000, is what our top teacher makes with benefits. So just that you refer to that, and the added responsibility of this individual would be that they would be doing evaluation, because they would have, they would be able to utilize their O-92, so there's benefit there. And then you could see the many other things, the rationale why. There's definitely increased programming, the state mandates, bullying initiatives, all the harassment, the amount of work going into an investigation. Doing an investigation as the only administrator in a building in some instances is stressful, and oftentimes Cindy or Melissa Isles from counseling, even myself, are going out to buildings to be that second set of hands in a situation at an elementary level because of the fact that we don't want to put the administrator in a position where they're alone, either with a student or with an investigation, that could potentially become litigious. And that's a very grave concern of ours, you know, at this point. Yep?
So is this, is this a position that could include possibly the roles of the early childhood coordinator?
No, because there, there wouldn't be enough hours in the day. There, because again, if we have one person for four schools, that's one day at each school with one day left over to kind of pick up the pieces and potentially do evaluations. So that's really what we were thinking, that if you have four schools on either side of town, they would spend a full day assisting with maybe EIP meetings, or if the teacher, if the principal's running EIP or running grade-level meetings, they would be there to deal with the other issues that occur, and then that, that fifth day, they would be able, actually be able to go out and do some of the observations. So unfortunately, I wish we could, but I think we probably would be biting off more than we could chew with this particular position, and we definitely would have to increase the salary. So these are some of the, the challenges that we like to address. The responsibilities, again, evaluate certified and non-certified staff, take on some of the responsibilities of PPTs and 504s, assist with discipline, assist in development implementation evaluation of intervention, prepare and maintain district and state reports, and work with principal to assist safe and secure learning environment for students. So again, it's, I understand it's an increase, I understand that it's an administrative increase, and I understand that oftentimes, we're easy targets as administrators, because the salaries tend to be a little higher. In this case, not substantially higher than our highest-salaried teacher with benefits, but still higher nonetheless. And oftentimes, the relationship between an administrator and its immediate, his or her immediate impact on students, people don't always see that correlation. But again, there is a significant correlation between the amount of work that our, our elementary principals are doing, and I do respect the hard work that they're putting in. I have to say, they brought this to us, but they were not expecting us, to be honest, I don't believe, to move it forward. But I think that Cindy and myself have seen the amount of increased responsibilities regarding student matters this year, that we felt it was incumbent upon us to at least bring it to the attention of the board, bring it to attention to the community, to make certain that everyone understood that we have strong administrators, we want to keep strong administrators, and that we felt that this was, at the very least, important for us to show respect to them, and to show definitely respect to their hard work. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would you see this also as a potential, as a feeder system for principalships, hopefully in district, but even if it's, even if, you know, if it ends up being out of district, I mean, good principals are good principals?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, and actually, he unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but one of our new administrator at Moran Middle School, as I mentioned, I think at my first presentation.
Yep.
Kind of was in one of these positions in his previous district, and it grew him in a way that he was a successful candidate to then take a next step. So again, we do see that as, as, as definitely a rationale for it. The cost of these positions, the two of them together, is $232,374. Okay, next.
Okay.
Mr. Mancusi?
Yes, there were several questions that we're going to be discussing now about, related to special education. One of the questions was, how have the numbers of special education students and staff by level changed over the last three years? As you can see, the number of special education students in district, this doesn't include out-of-district students, these numbers represent numbers as of our October 1st data collection submissions to the state in 2014-15. It was 289 for elementary, 15-16, 287, and this year, it's 319. The number of certified staff serving students in 14-15 was 69, 15-16, 69, 16-17, 76. That number represents the additional special education teachers that we were able to hire last year, that primarily are helping us focus on our focus monitoring plan, so we can eliminate that achievement gap in the area of reading between students with disabilities and their non-disabled peers. And then the number of non-certified staff serving students, 14-15 was 66, 15-16, 73, 16-17, it was 46.5. It was a significant decline there. You also see this, plus the 16 BTs, which is the behavior technicians, which we contract through Connecticut Behavioral Health to help us staff our in-district elementary programs for our most disabled kids, and they're assisting on building elementary capacity and handling the increased behavioral, social, emotional demands placed on us at this time. Any questions? Okay. The next question is, how have the number of special education students and staff by level changed over the last three years? Again, middle school, it's pretty much stayed, stayed the same, 158 in-district middle school students in 2014-15, 169 15-16, and 159 in 16-17. Number of certified staff was 23, 21, 26, and non-certified staff, 23, 25, and 23. Every year, at the end of the year, in preparation for the upcoming year, I, I meet with the principals, consult with the principals, review caseloads for the upcoming year, and determine their needs in terms of staffing and non-certified staff for the following year. And then the next slide is the high school. In 14-15, we had 225 special education students in district at Lyman Hall and Sheehan. 15 and 16, we had 221, and currently, there's 214. Certified staff, there's 23, 23, and 28. And then the number of non-certified staff, 22, 22, and 17 currently.
Sure. Hold on one second.
On these last two slides, why have the number of special education students gone down, but the number of certified staff increased? I'm sorry, I don't understand the, the, necessarily, the requirements, but just from a numbers point of view, it just seems as though these last two, you've had less, but more staff.
Those certified staff on those slides, they include special education teachers, school psychologists, school social workers, and speech pathologists. They don't include occupational therapists or physical therapists, because they're contracted services.
The reason why they went up, though, was, were you getting to that?
Yeah, the reason why they went up is because every year, based on the need, we redistribute our related service staff, which is your speech, your psychs, your social workers, and based on need, they might get additional staffing. We also added a certified special education teacher to address the reading needs, because we have a reading need within the department to close that achievement gap. So it's based on student need.
So each student, just a clarification also, just each student doesn't necessarily mean that just because it's the same number of students, that the name, same number of service hours are necessary. So an IEP, an Individual Education Plan, talks about service hours, and if a student comes with a need for more service hours, then you need more staff to man those service hours. So that's what, as the population shifts up, and unfortunately, as our students grow, sometimes there's growth, which is great, and you can reduce service hours, but unfortunately, sometimes there's not the growth that you would experience, and other disabilities might emerge that cause the need for additional resources. So it is, the, the special ed department, I have to say, really does painstakingly review every IEP, all the case managers are teachers doing a remarkable job, looking at those IEP hours and trying to ascertain where, where can they meet the needs and where can't they? And then Rob has the dubious task of trying to reallocate staff.
And we also have some specialized programs that service our middle school population. That, one of our programs, which is a district program, it's housed at Dag Camerashol Middle School, the population of students, or the amount of students over the past three years, has doubled. So increasing the allocation, or percentage of allocation of, of staff members, that's why you see that increase.
Any other questions on this, at this point? Okay.
All right. The next slide has to do with excess cost. What's the anticipated excess cost sharing? Do we expect any additional reductions? I know Ed and I have talked about this in the past. We're currently projecting 70% estimated revenue for $1.6 million approximately, and the total reimbursement rate for that is, is going, we're projecting from $75,738, which is our current threshold, to $79,146, which means that right now, if we get over, we get whatever the reimbursement percentage is, over $75,000 and change, we're projecting now that goes up to $79,000 and change. Last year, it was, I think, $69,000. So, we're concerned, our threshold is increasing, and the rate of reimbursement is decreasing.
So this just goes back to that October adjustment. I mean, remember, we lost about a little over $300,000, because they increased the threshold 9% this year. We're estimating that they're going to increase it, bless you, again, next year, so we budgeted for an additional 4.5% increase, which reduces, it's kind of a counterintuitive, an increase actually ends up being a decrease.
What's the estimated cost us for that increased threshold? Do we know?
I'm sure Ed could, the 4.5% that we added to it, based on?
Right, it's pro, it's close to $300,000 that we lose.
Thank you.
It's just the way the state makes up money. They give us, they give the, the excess cost X amount of dollars, which haven't changed in 10 years.
The next slide, the next question, how have the numbers outplayed students changed over the last three years? There's just a graphic, as you can see, in 14-15, there were 17 elementary outplaced, seven middle, 47 high, for a total of 71 outplayed students. 15-16 was 25, 12, and 33, for a total of 70 outplayed students. And 16-17 currently, that number is, as of yesterday, 29, 10, and 29 for currently 68 outplays. So the past three years, the number of outplayed students has stayed pretty steady. I will say, over the past five years, that number was up as high as 81. So we work painstakingly to maintain programming for our students with disabilities in district. There are times when we can't provide appropriate programming in districts, so we have to investigate appropriate placements out of district. So this is an area where we're constantly examining, because tuitions are going up for outplacements.
And that's a perfect segue into the next slide, which really demonstrates that even though our numbers have stayed steady, our costs for those outplacements have gone up, gone up significantly. So the total cost in 2014-15 was 3.1 million, and we had only 71, we had 71 students outplaced. In 15-16, 3.4 million, with 70 students outplaced. This year, with 68 students, so the least amount of students in three years, and it's $3.9 million in outplacement costs. So an additional half a million dollars in services. So again, we felt that this was very important data to share with the board and the community, that you might see numbers decrease, but it doesn't mean that the cost goes down. Many of these outplaced services recently, in fact, we have inherited, as we said, from other schools. They, they have programming, which they believe is in the best interest of students and is the most appropriate education, and we have a responsibility, if an IEP is put in place and they move from another town to Wallingford, we have and they move from another town to Wallingford, we have to uphold that IEP. So if that student is outplaced at a facility that's rather expensive, we again have a responsibility to maintain the state-put educational program for that child. So we also mentioned at our previous meeting that the state of Connecticut is one of only two states in the United States that has a burden of proof on the, on the school district, not the parent. So the burden of proof for special education is that, what that means is that the school district would have the burden of proving that the resources that the parents are asking for are not, are unreasonable. In most states, it's the opposite. The parent has to prove their case. In our state, the district has to prove its case. So it becomes very contentious, and actually, you have to then look at your, your loss that would potentially be accrued through litigation, and whether or not the loss will outweigh the actual outcome. And in many instances, it's not going to be the case, so therefore, you acquiesce to the outplacement. So this is a constant concern. This is a legislative agenda item for my professional organization. I don't think it comes up on others' agendas too often. It's more about, you know, maybe their, their organization's professional needs, but our professional organization at the superintendent, one of our professional needs is making sure that we have a budget that people would like, so we put it on our agenda. And I believe it's also on the K Board of Agenda for Boards of Education. It's, it's a large concern. So if you do have any connections with legislators, please, please, please bring up burden of proof, because it does really, it's a game changer for the state of Connecticut. It's a significant game changer. Any questions? Five oh four, Melissa Isles, why don't you come on up? She's been wanting the microphone. She's actually going to do this to an interpretive dance.
As you could see, one of the questions was asked is how many numbers of five oh four students we have? So in the two thousand fourteen and fifteen school year, in the elementary school, we had ninety-five, in the middle school, we had seventy-two, and at the high school, we had a hundred and twenty-two. Moving on to the school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, elementary school is one eighteen, the middle school is ninety, and the high school is a hundred and fifteen. In the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, as of twelve twelve two thousand sixteen, we had ninety-four elementary students identified, middle school ninety-seven, and a hundred and eleven at the high school level. And we're only at, that was in December, so we still have now from December to June. As Dr. Menzo had spoken, as well as Mr. Mancusi, that we've had an increase of students coming into district with some needs, and we accommodate those students where Mr. Mancusi more modifies than that.
And one of the things that Melissa won't say, because it's about her own role, is that one of the reasons why Melissa was brought on board at the district level was to monitor, to make sure that we're following compliance for five oh four. Like everything else from the state and federal government, there's high requirements in terms of compliance for families, and that was once in the special ed department, which you do not want those housed in the same department because they're not dictated under the same law. And they're actually not meant to go together because one is definitely not a special ed services, but we also have to make sure that we have appropriate documentation for students to be identified five oh four. And that's a tremendous amount of monitoring and bookkeeping and making sure that we're also, when eligible, applying for reimbursement, potentially for Medicaid, for five oh four students. So what's happened is our Medicaid reimbursement has increased over the last year that Ms. Isles has been here, because working closely with our administrators and our guidance counselors, we've been able to accrue additional revenue that was once not being allocated to our district. So again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the positions and changes that the board has made have been there for a purposeful reason. We don't always, aren't always able to share every reason at the outset of our discussions because everybody focuses usually on, on the bullets or the above-the-fold topics, but these are the ancillary pieces that truly are value-added to having a counseling coordinator. Oh, sorry, I'm delinquent. And I know there is an audience member who'd like to speak also on behalf of the next topic too. Beside you.
Okay. All right. What are family resource centers and why are they recommended? I know last year, this was brought up as well, and I know Dr. Menzo and as well as a building principal was very passionate about having the family resource centers. Family resource centers provide a safe, accessible place for families to connect with comprehensive coordinated services that help them strengthen their families and become more self-reliant. And programs are tailored to the culture, resources, and needs of the community they serve, and focus on building on strengths of each family and individual. And I know there's two, I don't know who's going to want to take the microphone, but I know there was a building principal.
Yes, oh, actually, we have a guest from our public library.
Oh, excellent.
If you could just state your name for...
Yes, I'm Sunny Scarpa. I'm the head of children's services over at the Wallingford Public Library, and I'm also the board president for We Care, which is Wallingford's version of an early childhood council. So at the library, we offer an average of nine programs per week, free for families, with children ages zero through kindergarten, and then additional on top of that for school-age kids. We find that these programs are always full, we have waiting lists, and families are clamoring for any free information, resources, connection to services that we can offer them. We Care similarly has four free play groups for families per week that are always full. We also offer free professional development for preschool teachers and parents, always full, waiting lists. So families really are clamoring for information about how they can strengthen their families, how they can help their children with homework, how they can get them successfully from preschool to kindergarten. Families really want this information, but not everyone can come easily to the library if they live on the other side of the town, if transportation's an issue. So I really see the value of having more connection to resources across town in different places, especially the K-12 schools that are super accessible for our families. Research really, really supports wise investments in early childhood. More and more is coming out, studies over the past few years, and everything shows there is a very strong correlation between services to preschool and kindergarten that pays dividends in the long run. It really, all the studies have shown the age-old adage, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, really to be true, especially financially. So preventing problems later on, when our kids are in preschool, in kindergarten, we will spend so much less money in the long run when potentially children, you know, aren't ready for high school, aren't prepared for college, and then the town will benefit later when those things don't happen. They're more able to get good jobs and be productive citizens. So I, I mean, the studies just blow your mind how there's a correlation between quality preschool and keeping kids out of prison, honestly. So I really support this. I think it's a very wise investment. In meetings with other towns, early childhood councils, towns who have more family resource centers, talk about the great impact that they have. And then while I'm up here, I also want to throw my support behind the position of early childhood coordinator. We've talked about this with my team at the library and also with the We Care board, absolutely ready to work with that person and, and support them in any way that we can.
Thank you.
Who else would like to say something?
If there's anyone, nobody has to, but if there's anyone else? There's one other, I just, thank you very much. Sure, go for it.
So while I fully and completely recognize the value of a family resource center and have read the studies and I'm a hundred percent in support of having family resource centers in our schools, the question I have to ask is that we, as a district, take on so many responsibilities. We'll look at what we're doing, just educating our students in the five oh fours and the IEPs, and then the other services that students need. I just wonder if we're not asking too much of our school district to provide this service as well, and if maybe we can't find, and even if anyone's watching, an outside partnership who will come in and house it, and I don't know how we would work it out, house it in the school so it's available, but it's not something that we, as a board, necessarily fund, because I do worry when we look at increased costs and reduces in grants and reduces in, in funding from the state and all these other things that are just piling on top. This is a necessary service, but I just don't know if it should really be placed in our budget.
Just to clear, just to finish this off, again, their, their request is for two non-certified members, nineteen hours a week, one for either side of town. I do have to say, and piggyback off Shauna's comments, my previous district, we did have a family resource center in our K six, pre-K six school. It was funded through a grant that Youth Services was awarded, but Youth Services had to, there was, there was membership requirements to different things. So we can continue to investigate that. I, I know that we have a strong relationship with Youth Services. I know that We Care in particular is trying to investigate funding to maintain itself. Unfortunately, Wallingford doesn't always benefit from grants, so therefore, it is somewhat, somewhat more challenging. But again, we will reconvene those conversations. We continue those, actually, I had one today already. But it's, it's again, it's trying to find the perfect fit and, and making sure that we're eligible.
What's the financial implication? Obviously, it's a recurring expense.
Yes, the family, the family resource centers, the two of those is forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
For two of them?
For two of them.
Where, where would they be housed?
We have one presently in a not, an unofficial one at Moses Y., so we would continue the Moses Y. Beach one.
We do have one going.
Yes.
I, I know I asked questions about that, and could you talk about that for, did we do that as, oh, I don't want to say that.
Well, no.
I don't want to say the P-word, pilot.
No, we didn't do it as a pilot.
A pre-launch.
We, we did it as a...
A pre-launch?
We did it...
Sort of a joke from this morning.
We actually did it as a collaborative with We Care. And Mr. Arcero had the space and had the, the will, and the, he was asked, because of We Care's connection with SCOW, that they're essentially, they're closing, walking, walking distance to many of the families, that that was the pilot location. So...
So can we talk about what's going on in the pilot?
I would love to have Mr. Arcero, sure.
I guess I'm baiting you. Well, I, I guess I'm asking, because I was, I actually asked, this was one, one of my questions, which actually theoretically did not get asked, so I'm going to ask it anyway. That's the luxury. About the idea that I thought that we had, we did have a pilot, and I wasn't sure.
I knew Mr. Arcero would be here to answer your question.
Absolutely, absolutely. First, I want to be clear that it is not an official family resource center. You know, I, I'm very proud of the work that happens there through a co-location of services in the partnership, but there's a limitation in that there are more co-located services organized so that our families, it's right there, it's on campus and can access it much, much more easily. Not being staffed per se and having somebody there leaves a huge gaping hole in terms of what an opportunity is. And while I can't promise those of you who I followed to your cars last year to really, really pitch this idea, I, I need to underscore the importance that it's not something that potentially at some point, like, I want to say Ms. Sunny, I'm sorry, Ms. Sunny from the library will, will say the connection between the importance and the, and its impact. It won't be something that we won't feel in terms of a burden. I want to be clear, as the building principal, especially when I think of earlier slides in regards to dean of students and what it means to have the support of an early childhood educator, we feel it, and it's there and it's in the building now. So to have that extra resource in a way that already is cost-effective in that it's a part-time position, but it still has a consistent presence, is something that would have a huge impact in terms of payoff. Again, obviously, I'm passionate about it and philosophically, it's a belief, but some of the things that happen right now, I painted a picture last year when I took the microphone, and I guess this goes my reputation as the mic hog, is when you look down the hall, you'll see families, a nice group of families, could be a healthy size of eight, eight moms, strollers there in tow, little ones, toddlers that are already there on campus. I'm already starting to see the return now from having those families come and work in this classroom space where little ones now have registered for preschool. And I saw them as toddlers in my building, in the hallway, in this informal setup. So to formalize that and get more families in and have the capacity to welcome them, whether it's to connect them to a host of resources, whether they are social resources, whether they are things that are in academic focus, whether it's connecting and expanding library services and co-locating them on campus so that you can reproduce that, but in satellite locations that would be accessible, because we do have a lot of families that just walk, the impact is huge. And I do see the difference when I have families come on our doorstep, that their children have never been exposed to a preschool setting. And while we've expanded slots, and that's great, there still are a huge cache of families that just rely on great library programs, but unfortunately, if it's Mrs. Stowe on a Tuesday afternoon and she can only accommodate ten kids, once it's full, that's it. There's no more opportunities. So it's just another way that's, that's much more cost-effective to replicate it and bring it right to where it has its greatest impact, and that's in the halls of our schools. I would welcome anybody, again, I'll throw out the invitation, if somebody does want to come and check out a session at my school, I'd be more than happy to host it.
But is there, are there opportunities? I mean, I wrote down library, We Care, Youth Services as partners, and even possibly SCOW as I think about it, that, I mean...
Well, We Care, financially, as financial partners, We Care, I can probably speak very clearly, they don't have any funds. I can't speak for the other departments.
Sure, I wouldn't, I'm not looking for that, actually, but it's more just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, we...
Similar to Shauna's plea, really. I mean, I, I don't mean to minimize forty-two, almost forty-three thousand dollars is forty-three thousand dollars. We obviously have larger ticket items than forty-three thousand in here, so it just seems like, I, I hear the plea, pay me now, pay me later, and that's true in anything in life, and certainly with our youth. So just something to think about.
Thank you. Ms. Lovell?
In last Wednesday night's presentation, there were several clerical positions that were reduced from perhaps twelve months to eleven, or twelve months to ten months, and I believe there was one that was reduced eleven months to ten months. And so the question came up, would there be any insurance savings as a result of reducing these positions? And the short and simple answer is no, there wouldn't be. According to contract for clerical employees, if it's still a full-time position, regardless of whether it's ten, eleven, or twelve-month position, they still do get insurance benefits. So that's the basic, simple answer to that question.
Ms. Vay?
So there was a question on how has funding impacted the technology in the district? And through state grants, E-rate funding, and the one percent account, we've been able to reduce our computer replacement cycle from a six-through-eight-year cycle down to a four-to-six-year cycle. Of this cycle, this current year, only fifty devices are at that six-year age range, and although they were bought six years ago, they're really the same model as what was bought five years ago. So we didn't feel we needed to replace those at that time. We are also able to upgrade many of the computers, almost all of them, to Windows ten, so that definitely extended their life also. The other piece of the puzzle that you can't necessarily see here is balancing out the purchasing of equipment. Through the years, there's been, if you will, a little bit of feast and famine, and there's been some years where only fifty devices were purchased, and some years through perhaps a state grant, a thousand devices were purchased. So balancing it out helps us to better even the purchases. So we've been still working at that. And the current replacement cycle plan allows both our students and faculty access to reliable, relevant technologies in their classrooms, so...
Any questions? All right. So we're just going to close with just efficiency measures taken to mitigate budget increases. We continue to develop in-district special education programming. As Rob mentioned earlier, we look to consolidate transportation routes where possible. We also... We also continue to work with curriculum collaboration and transportation collaboration for even non-special ed students, trying to reduce the runs in district. I would also like to say that we have done, because one question that came up was, had we done an efficiency study for our buildings? We have done one, and now it's going on about five years. That is something that, through our lean practices and our lean training, we are looking at that being part of a kaizen event, which is an event to really delve deeper into root cause analysis, to some of the opportunities for effectiveness, increased effectiveness in our district. So, that will be back on the discussion board, hopefully re-engaging the electric company, who was very helpful in the first energy efficiency project, hopefully engaging them in another one. We are going to be conducting at least one kaizen event, which you see up here, which will happen within the next four to six weeks. We did a training last Thursday for a building and level administrator at each level, plus our central office staff and a curriculum person. It was a day to discuss the principles of lean, and we've shared with the board a little bit of those concepts, that lean is not about doing more with less, but it's about learning and being more effective with what we already have. So, we're trying to look at that, and look at the different aspects of waste, looking at the pillars of lean, and relentless improvement, which is always part of that. So, our goal, the team brainstormed some initial kaizen opportunities. We have our consultants who have shared with us some information. I've waited to send this out to the group until probably Friday, because the first few days of this week was a little crazy, and trying to reduce some stress, too. So, we're going to be identifying our area of focus, and we'll be bringing that back to the board. The idea is that those philosophies will then, will bring in other groups. Last year, we brought in our leaders of all of our unions to participate in an event. We'd like to do that again. We had some fun with that, and so we'd like to do that again, and then potentially develop the culture to start some kaizen events, or some lean committees at schools, and that'll be part of our planning process with our administrators as we move forward. But we had a very good day, I think everybody left there when we were ending, saying it was a very positive professional learning opportunity for our administrators that were involved. So, with that said, I always end with where are we now? We do have a reduction in our budget, and I would like to give all the credit to Rob Mancusi, Mary Ann Croce, and Ed Arum, because we are reducing our transportation budget. Come on, drumroll. Ed, take it away.
Yeah, well, as we discussed at the last meeting here, as I try to be just a conductor of everybody coming in, with Mary Ann, and Rob, and his staff, we looked at in-district special ed transportation, and we can reduce it with, but not hurting the children at all. We can reduce next year's budget by a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and this year's budget, at the next operations meeting, we'll be able to increase our surplus from eight thousand in transportation to two hundred three thousand in transportation. So, as just the conductor, watching everybody and getting everybody together, it's more of talking with people, and getting them to think that they do think, I'm sorry. Differently, thank you, Karen.
Has anybody ever seen the movie Whiplash?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, I got it.
But it's a...
Not quite. A little too fast, a little too slow.
For further consolidations that really don't hurt the children. Just give you a quick, my background, I began in the first special ed programs in New York City in nineteen, I won't tell you, so I'm very familiar with special ed and so forth. And Mary Ann Croce, there's always, as my wife says, there's always a good woman behind good men, right? And Mary Ann is really tremendous, really helpful, knows everything. You ask her a question, you say, can we do this, and in fifteen minutes, we have the answer, so it's really good. She's a bright spot, with many other bright spots in Wallingford.
So, we're very pleased to say that this evening, that last week, or last time we met, it was a three-point-one-five percent increase for sustained services, and tonight, we're presenting you with a two-point-nine-nine percent increase. We are going to be relentlessly pursuing other efficiencies that are not impacting students, not impacting teaching staff, or any of our staff. So, we're working very closely with Ed and other departments to do that, maintenance in particular. And again, I do want to give a lot of credit to that whole team. Ed is, of course, very modest, but again, all of them working together collaboratively. The collaboration that we're experiencing this year, in the budget process with the business department, is phenomenal, and we're very appreciative of that.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Ed, I cannot agree more with you about Mary Ann Croce, and one thing I have to say, because I've been, I've had a bullseye on my back this year, and I've worked on several occasions with Mary Ann, I know she puts families first, so I know personally, my experiences in working with transportation, she would never, ever sacrifice the safety or the security of any of our students to save a buck. So, I know she puts families first, always. The other thing, though, if you're right on your predict, or potential forecasting on insurance, if that comes in, that's gonna shave it, what did you say, a couple hundred thousand, you're hopeful? So, that would bring it down like two-tenths, two-tenths of a percent, roughly, two-tenths of a percent, would that be right?
Potentially.
Yeah, so that would be, you know, that'd be pretty good, yeah.
So, I just, in conclusion before, what I would like to hope we could do tonight, is maybe go through the sustained service section of the budget, but I do want to say, as Ed just said, none of this can be done without a cast of many people, and I just don't want to miss opportunities to thank people that don't get thanked publicly, like Tony Hale in our business office. Tony works side-by-side with Ed on all of this, and oftentimes, those are the people that aren't seen at most of the meetings, but are doing a tremendous amount of the legwork behind the scenes, so I just do want to thank Tony.
She corrects all of us.
She corrects all of us, exactly, in a very calm, kind manner. But I do want to thank also, of course, all the central office staff for helping pull this together. I put together a draft document, and then they helped populate it, and we kind of get into our war room setting, and all work collaboratively. And I think that Carrie, just jumping into the group, just really lent herself and her expertise to this process, and it's been a nice transition. Mark got off easy tonight so far, but believe me, audience, Ms. Levak sent him about fifty-five questions. I take all the questions, and I color-code them, and Mark's are like, the whole, like, three pages of just all Mark's color, green, to go with money. So, he'll be responding to those, and we'll get those questions as we move forward. I would also like to thank all the administrators for their hard work in this process, because obviously, to get to this point, you have to get to collect the information from the administrators at the building level, to make the best decisions for the students. And it really is not an easy process, so again, their hard work, their hours, are very important. So, with that said, Mr. Broder, I do, we do have our head of our food services, I don't know if you want to start, just have a review of the food services budget, since he's here this evening?
Yes, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yep.
So, would you like to come up?
Yes, Mr. Broder.
How are you?
Good.
So, you're gonna walk us through our budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen?
Well, I was asked to prepare a budget for the food service department. I, of course, met with Ed, went over, went over a few items. I just want to state, I had nothing to do with the budget at sixteen seventeen, so all I did was transfer the figures that were over there. I mean, it's quite obvious that the contribution from the board is not going to be needed. And the actuals, I went into the munitions reports and balanced it out, to show what the deficit last year was, with the retirees leaving and everything else. Then I looked at it, and made an effort to do a budget, what it would look like for the year seventeen eighteen, and as it was projected on the screen, it comes up with a total loss for the year of a hundred and eighteen thousand four ninety-five. With that being said, I anticipate that we would still have approximately our hundred and nineteen thousand money market carrying over until next year, because Ed and I have been discussing that we most likely will not have a deficit this year. So, having that balance at the beginning of the year, I still come up with a loss of two thirty-seven six ninety-five. In the audience tonight are three of the ladies that were planning on retiring. They did give me a commitment that they would not retire if we continued to self-off the operation, and that would affect that loss of a hundred and eighteen thousand by, if you look on the page where it says retiree buyouts, of thirty-nine thousand four oh five. So, it'd reduce what the projected loss would be significantly by that amount. Of course, it's a budget, anything could happen.
Where's that on?
It's on the, the last page of the cafeteria fund expenditures, above full-time employees.
Got it.
It's thirty-nine thousand four oh five. With that being said, budget's made, but budgets can change. The figures that I get, basically for the increase, if you look at the cash sales side, is I'm anticipating an increase from the government of approximately three percent, but then again, also, we have to add in the state matching fund, and the healthy food compliance, which equivalents to about thirty thousand, and then also, the extra money we get for the breakfast we are currently serving at the high school. A la carte sales, I really didn't bump up a lot, and that's where it also can change. I mean, currently, we're having tremendous sales in our school, and of course, the lunch increase that you, the board authorized last year, is helping in that area also. So, that's how I basically came up with the figures. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you would have at this time.
Yes, Karen.
Yes.
So, I'm looking at the capital equipment fund, which is zeroed out.
Right.
You don't anticipate replacing any capital equipment?
No, just to clarify that, and from what I understand, I've only been here for a year, and all of the capital equipment has been purchased by the board, which I do thank you for. All of our ovens at our schools, except for Moran, are up to date and of the most advanced. And currently, I am not purchasing any equipment, and I don't foresee any equipment breaking down at this time. Like I said, probably the only large expenditure would be Moran, because we're having difficulty with the oven over there. But the freezers and the warmers, maybe a few warmers, but you're looking at expenditures that are approximately nineteen hundred dollars apiece.
Three years ago, the board chose to put those in our strategic plan, so those have been in Mark's maintenance strategic plan, and the mayor has funded those items the last three years. So, it's been sinks, and then also, we've used unencumbered funds for them, or CRA funds, so the hand-washing sinks, the combi ovens, a variety of other things that needed to be replaced.
The grease straps and so on, they were all paid for. And I have to say remarkably, these ovens cook the food tremendously. They're called combi ovens, they do a tremendous job.
So, this problem that you're having with the Moran oven?
Well, Moran's just an older school, and it's something that Mark and I have talked about, and we'll talk with Ed. If she could probably get one of those combi ovens of what she has, it would be able to work extremely well, or very efficiently over there.
And what is, what are the costs for that?
Do you know offhand, Mark? I'm thinking of the neighborhood of seventeen thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That may be uninstalled.
Right.
That's correct, about seventeen, eighteen thousand. The oven at Moran is still serviceable, so it is something we can keep working if need be.
Yeah, I did just recently repair it, and it did cost us around twenty-nine hundred dollars to get it working properly.
Thank you.
Originally, when I did come here, and I sat with Cindy and the superintendent of the schools, looking at the budget and the projections, I mean, they looked like they were so out of whack, and I don't, I don't see us ever getting close to, like, if you look at board of contribution for sixteen seventeen, four hundred and sixty thousand, I mean, those numbers are never gonna hit there. I try to keep everything in line, I try to encourage the staff to come in every day, it's very important that they do, because when staff's out, it's costing us twice as much to serve a student. And hopefully, we can get our numbers up, which they currently aren't doing at the best I think they should be doing, but there's always chance for improvement, and hopefully, we can get it done. Yes?
So, what, that, okay, how are we showing this in the overall Board of Ed budget? What are you, how are you showing it, though?
We, going into the Board of Ed budget this year, we said to the board back in December, that we weren't going to be putting any subsidy in the Board of Ed budget, so there is no subsidy, because you decided that in February, based on the most up-to-date projections, you were gonna decide whether or not we were gonna go out to bid.
Right.
The reason why we didn't put any subsidy in the budget, is that if we went out to bid, one of the requirements of the bidders would be that they would have to break even, so there'd be no cost to the Board of Education. So, it would be premature for us to put a subsidy in the Board of Ed budget, if the understanding was, and the understanding that we felt we heard from the board, was that we did not want to have a subsidy for the budget for food services. So, we didn't want to put one in, and then take it out, and then play that game.
Right.
So, I think the goal that we're striving for right now, is to mitigate the potential loss, and have that conversation in February about what the potential loss would be, based on income that might be projected this year, because there might be an income rather than deficit, as was recommended, and then determining whether or not that loss, the projected loss, is a value-added reason to go out to bid. So, if the loss, say the loss goes down, you know, to sixty, seventy thousand dollars, is that something that the board, again, having that conversation, does the board want to go out to bid, knowing that the potential loss is sixty thousand dollars, knowing that they would potentially break even, or would they want to wait and see? Because I know that there's obviously commitment on the part of the staff, on the food services program, that you can't sometimes put a price on.
That's very true.
And so, we wanted to just proceed full transparency with the board, but also, out of respect to the staff members who've been working very hard, and have incredible morale with Allen's leadership.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I guess you're estimating about a hundred thousand dollar loss in the current period, is that correct?
Next, next year.
No, no, this year, this year, for the, what is forecasted for sixteen seventeen to finish? The only reason I get that is, I mean, if you're saying you had two eighteen last year, and you expect to end at two nineteen?
I, the way I look at it, that's what we ended up with at the end of the year. Am I correct, Ed? We had a hundred and nineteen thousand in the general, in the money market fund.
Correct.
I will, I, right, that's...
At the end of fifteen sixteen?
Right. I do not anticipate to use that at this time.
Okay. Yeah, just, because I, at the top, it's, is that just the budget? I just don't know where the twenty, where's the twenty-five come from? That's what I'm getting confused at, I guess.
The operating loss?
No, the fund balance at the top of the...
Twenty-four, six, forty-seven.
I didn't do that budget, so I don't, I just carried the figures over. I think that's what the previous administration figured that was gonna be left in the money market at that time.
We knew, okay. Okay. And the next question?
I did do some figure running, too, like Dr. Menzo did give you enrollment figures. Currently, we're at twenty-one percent free and reduced at this point, and I'm trying to get the cooperation, like I got the cooperation with the both building principals. My feeling is, when those children go to school, let's think of that twenty-one percent, and during the exam period this year, we are gonna open for breakfast for the students, and we're also gonna open during grade time. I mean, it's kind of embarrassing thing, that some of these kids might be going to school, and not have the opportunity to have a meal tomorrow, and the rest of the week during the exams, they will. Whether they take advantage or not, we'll have to see, you know, report, and let you know how we do.
And the other question I have is, it looks like we're projecting, which is finding a big spike in the revenue side. Does that, can you just tell us what that includes, especially in the student lunches? Are you estimating any increase in pricing, or you just estimate additional sales?
The price increase has an awful lot to do with the increase. The actual from last year was with the old pricing, and I believe you went up close, was it close to ten percent, or, yeah, it was close to ten percent?
Did you factor any of that in?
Yes, I did, and I also figured, I figured, factored in under a la carte sales. Yes, I did, and I also figured, I figured, I factored in under a la carte sales. Or under paid lunches, I'm sorry.
What percent did you factor in on an increase in prices?
I'd have, I could research it, and I'd get back to you on that. I want to make sure I give you an exact figure.
Yeah, I'd like to know the kind of breakdown, how we're going to increase between, there's probably two-fold. It's probably a function of increase in price and an increase in sales, so...
Right, there'll be an increase in both, right.
Yeah, I just want to know what that difference is. And also, on the state side as well.
The state side, we know for a fact, the federal always is 3% increase. And the state, and the other one, the state one is approximately what we get for the $3,000 for serving both, breakfast at both schools, roughly $35,000 in the state matching funds, which is under a block grant, and the healthy food certificate, which is around 30-some-odd thousand. That's based on how many meals we served in the previous fiscal year, 10 cents per meal.
Okay, so there's no consideration of potential drop in that? There's no, have you heard anything, I guess, as far as...
Currently, we haven't heard anything, but there was a small drop in what is known as the breakfast funding because if your schools weren't 60% or more, instead of getting the full 100%, we only got 80%. So, there was a minor drop in that. That's a good point.
Any other questions?
Yeah, speaking as a director, I wish we could continue to move on. We do have tremendous staff, which are working very hard, and I, they know I'm out there, and I'm 100% behind them.
Thank you.
All right, so we can move to the section four, I believe, of the budget. And we'll let Ed guide us through this?
If you look at the first, it's the 100 account, personnel. As you can see, for all the 100 accounts, the new budget is 67,588,488. $1.1 million increase, which is a 1.66% increase. We, as you can look down, the contingency has gone up by 119,000, and there's listed of what, what some of the factors are. Certified salaries, as you know, the contract was agreed upon, and there's the increase of 1.5% and a step increase of 1.45%. As it looks at the 1,239,000 increase. We did some severance, as we talked about, it's gone down. Long-term subs going up just a little bit. Waivers, as you can see, that's one of the reasons why the insurance has gone down. The waivers has gone down tremendously by $578,000. And that's, again, for Cindy's negotiations of the contract. Tutors, that's another area we're looking at for tutors, for having a single time where the tutors are available. Whether it's, and I'm just making up these times, so don't hold me to it. Like, if a tutor's, we put him from 9:00 to noon in one location, or 3:00 to 5:00 in another location, so we can save money on busing because now, you could have 9:00 to 11:00, and then 12:00 to 2:00, and so forth. So, we're looking at that. Adult ed, the interns that we have going up slightly. Student activities, that's all the stipend plans. Administrators, you can see their increase and so forth. So, that total of that section, which is certified salaries, is going up 780,000. The non-certified section is going up 204,000. As we said, an increase of 1.1 or 1.66% increase for salaries. The next one is employee benefits, as we talked about. We have a meeting tomorrow at 1:30 with the mayor and the insurance consultant. We have 8% in there. The whole account, as you can see, the unemployment has gone down by $200,000, as you know, this year. Last year, you eliminated some positions. Again, right now, we're still showing a surplus in that account of 125,000. We're projecting, as we give the operations committee. Social Security and Medicare, as you know, Medicare is, any teacher who has moved from 1986 to a new district, we pay Medicare for them 1.45%. So, anybody coming in, we pay Medicare. Medicare is because when they can retire, they can collect Medicare. Social Security and so forth. So, that account is going up 592,000 or 4.9%.
Can we, why don't we pause there? Any questions on the first two accounts from any board members? Okay.
Audience?
Audience? Beulah?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Everybody's healthy, so... Next one, purchase of professional technical services. That account's gone up 432,000 or 21.7%. The reason why, if you look at 323, it's outside professional services. That's the behavioral...
Behavioral technicians.
Technicians that are coming in to the district to help the autistic children. That's why it's increased. Also, a slight increase in high school athletics, $8,000 for those items.
Could you tell me what the average cost per hour for outside OT/PT services is?
OT is about $87 an hour, and, excuse me, OT is about $54 an hour. PT is about $87 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? We go to the 400 account, purchase services, which includes utilities, our disposal services, which is our garbage collection. Repair and maintenance, our custodial cleaning services, rentals. As you can see, the count is going up a total of $166,000 or a 3.71% increase. The utilities, it's an average of 6.33%. There's two groups in the utilities, a 10% and a 2.5% that are received from the Wallenford Electric, and we average it out to 6.33. Disposal is going up by 15,000. The repairs, as you can list, Mark does a great job, and he also has a great staff, the electricians, the plumbers, the carpenters. If you ever see him around the buildings, they are really very professional and great. I want to give a plug to, I should give a plug to one, Ted, the electrician is super. He helped us out on the Lyman Hall field, pulling 1,000 feet of wire for us to hook it up. And they're here on the game Thanksgiving.
Ted's only fault is that he's a Boston fan, but we let that go.
We've given him Yankee hats and all that.
Yeah, he doesn't wear them for some reason.
Well, they're great staff. Asked them to do, and especially Mark as their leader, really a great staff. If you want to say something about them more. You haven't said anything all day.
All the time, I, you know, thank my lucky stars that have such a great staff. They do amazing things, and they pretty much do anything they're asked of. No job is too big. We can pretty much accomplish anything. Outside contractors would have a hard time holding anything against these guys. They come to work and just do an amazing job. They're very well-suited to work here. We select our people really based on the fact that they're safe, they have a safe track record in the work area that they specialize in. And in 20 years, we've never hurt a teacher or a student in this school system. It's a big thing to have that kind of track record. We have hurt ourselves from time to time, but we don't really count in the big scheme of things. Thank you very much.
And Mark saving his voice again for Karen's 54 questions. Next week.
Also, custodial cleaning. This year, Mark, there was, I think it was two company, one company that was at two schools that were not doing a great job at all, and Mark has, seeing that, we eliminated those two. Mark has, I shouldn't say me, Mark eliminated those two and gave them to another contractor. So, that's why there was an increase, and we had to go for more money in the contingency. But I think it worked out very well for us that he did that. Next one is the Board of Ed offices that we rent here, which, as I understand, is much better than all the other three places you were at. And the next one is the maintenance staff and...
We were going to file for McKinney-Vento for homeless at one point, but we chose not to.
Came close.
Absolutely.
And the last thing is the air quality. We're always, Mark is always number one in making sure that the quality of air in all our buildings are up to date. If there's a question, he's out there and to test everything, so it's important.
I do want to, if I can mention also, just before you conclude this one, is that we're very fortunate, and I don't want to call her out totally in the audience, but we do have one staff member who's been on our steering committee for facilities, stalwart member, Anne Vronne-Letterly. And I have to say that Mark totally gives you a lot of respect because Anne has been the eyes and ears many times that we need and very respectfully reaches out to Mark and myself and informs us when there's an impending challenge or opportunity for growth. And again, just putting in her time on that committee and willingness to not only work in that capacity, but also with our safety committee, really has helped us move a lot of these initiatives forward. So, I just saw her sitting there, and I know I'm embarrassing her, but I just wanted to thank her too, so...
And again, that account has gone up by 6.57% or $166,000. The next one is 500, purchase services, which includes a number of things. Pupil transportation, tuition are probably the most, biggest areas of that budget. The total budget is going up 788,000 or 7.48%. The contracted services for pupil service, for transportation is two and a half. Again, this does not show the reduction of $150,000 that we had, we made after this was printed. Communications going up about 13,000. Advertisings, you can see, the big one, again, is tuition. As Rob showed, even though the number may be reduced by two, the number of children who come here who are at high risk in a high, in a high-risk environment, their expenses are very high, whether a nurse is required, whether other types of...
Really, depending on the severity of the disabilities, we have to respond to the need. And, you know, recently, that response is to program for some very, very, very impaired children.
Going around the state as a business official, and I have monthly meetings with the business officials, it's, we're not alone in this. I was at another district the other day and talking to their special services director and asking them if they, a couple of our schools that we participate, we send children, they do too. It's just getting, the children are finding out, need more attention than usual.
It's, you know, I've told you before, I belong to the ACES region, Connecticut Council for Special Administrators, CONCASE. And, you know, we're constantly talking about the rise in tuitions and the pressure we feel because of that, so we are not alone.
But also, Rob has, as I mentioned at some of the operations committee, we have brought back a number of students to the district, but the other ones are higher placed, so forth. So, that 500 account is going up 7.48% or, as we said, a total of 788,300. Again, also in that account is the excess cost grant, so we've, that's at 70% and so forth. That's what we mentioned on the other screen. Next one is supplies, instructional, maintenance, textbooks, library, and AV materials. That's going up 129,000 or 5.17%. You can see where increase really is in instructional supplies going up 48,000. Maintenance supplies going up 34,000. Maintenance supplies going up. We've kept that reasonably low in the last couple of years, and you want to make, not make it up, but make sure that we have enough supplies to keep the buildings clean and clean. Textbooks are going 18,000. You can see library books and AV materials going down. Heat is going up about 23,000. So, that account is a mixture of supplies, library books, and heat.
Sorry, just the point of reference. The regular ed allocation increase of 5%, we have not increased allocations in over three years. We actually, the first year we were here, we cut them in half. So, they've been still trying to regain ground. So, this is a small increase with the additional needs of the students.
The next one is 700 account. That, there's a decrease of $80,000. The main reason is the, remember, we moved out of contingency into this account, the items for the Lyman Hall track, and that won't be purchased next year. So, that's why that's going down because that's taken out of the budget. And the last one is 800 miscellaneous, that's dues. That's also a decrease of $26,000 or minus 10% for dues and fees. And you can see the expenses that have gone down, mainly the cafeteria subsidy is the main reason. That, again, this budget does not show, this is the 3.15 budget. We'll make that change, $150,000 in district special ed transportation, so it's a 2.99% increase. And we'll know tomorrow for our benefits account.
I would just like to remind the board and also wish Ed well. Ed will be departing for warmer weather for approximately six weeks, hopefully warmer weather.
I thought I was out of here in October.
So, he'll be...
I will have my computer. I have my phone. Tony knows how to get to me. So, I'll be doing work, no charge, whatever it is, I'll do for you. I'll have the operations for you on that day.
Excellent.
Thank you. And so...
We are going to deeply miss him during those six weeks.
Thank you, Ed.
If nothing else...
I've given them my picture, so they all have my picture.
Yes, we do. He gave us his Christmas card. His holiday card is, it's Ed. We don't, like Cindy said, we don't know if he's a...
A mortician or the Supreme Court judge.
Exactly. And it says, "The Babe." We do all have a picture of him, so we'll remember him and recognize him when he walks through the doors in the first week of March. So, but we want, I just want to say, it has been a pure, utter, absolute pleasure developing this budget with you this year. We've laughed a lot. We've eaten a lot. Karen made her infamous chocolate chip scones today, so we had those, and they were still... so we had those and they were still warm, which was great. But we, we've had a good time with this and it's kind of, I'm probably in envious position as a superintendent to say that developing the budget with a group of people could be fun, because we were always there and Ed's most often stated comment was, "How could I help you? How could I help you? I'm here to serve you." That was his comment all the time. So we look forward to hearing those comments and I'm sure your wife looks forward to hearing those comments when you're down in Florida with her. So I'm sure you and Alice will have a great time, but we really can't thank you enough and.
It's my pleasure, the people here are great, the staff is great, the business staff, Tony, everybody is just tremendous. You should feel proud of the principals, the teachers and the administration. I don't work for everybody, just to let you know. Superintendents I've said I walked out on because they're not the right people and I won't do it, but here is the right people and, and the board is also. I don't work, I've been at some board members with board meetings where they don't even talk about education, but this board does talk about education and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
So that's the sustained services budget, we're at your will, whatever you'd like to do.
Any questions? We, we do have a meeting, I mean, we'll get into.
Our next meeting is, our next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM here. And what we would like to do is we'll give an update, I'm sure everybody will be interested in hearing about the insurance.
Yes.
So we'll give you an update on the insurance. And then what I was going to suggest is that we could look at the highlights of the strategic plan budget, and we do have the prioritization page. What I am going to do is once I hear the highlight, the, the hopefully good news about the insurance, I'll adjust the final column on that prioritization page, because it's going to obviously change all the percentages as well as the $150,000.
Right.
So we'll adjust that in the document and I'll, I won't necessarily print out another color copy, because I don't want to waste that, but I'll at least give you the updated numbers for that following column.
So are you going to provide on the 25th, your ranked?
We already have that in your budget book.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Yep, if you look in section three, it's the last pages, we've already provided it. So it's the last two pages.
Come on, that's going to change.
Well, the budget, the, the number, the starting number is going to change at the top, so that's why I said the percentages, I'll, I'll present you a new percentage. In terms of the actual ranking of these, these aren't going to change, these are the rankings that we've, we've had.
Okay, you're, you're, yeah, this is died in the wool, these are your rankings.
This was a lot of work, you know, arm wrestling between Mark and Rob.
Is there a color?
Yes, if you look in your strategic plan budget, every section heading matches the color. Yeah, smooth, huh? Exactly, got up early from that one.
Is it a weather day?
It was, probably. I have people asking me about their child's wedding and see if I could give them weather forecasting for that now, so I'm going to do that as a satellite service and bring revenue in for the board.
So, I mean, really, in theory, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had provided this prioritization already for us. I guess after, for the 25th meeting, after that, there's nothing that's going to change. I mean, it should be, and I guess I'm saying this more for board members' sake than anything, you know, we should be formulating in our own minds what we're comfortable with for a strategic plan budget number, and, and really that's it, and what our individual comfort levels are, but the work's really been done for us. And, and no more potential savings in our sustained services will be experienced after this week, if I'm saying that correctly.
Correct. We might have one more budgetary adjustment for insurance, because we do ask for one more.
Okay.
But again, that would be much later in the process. We're going to, the only adjustments that we're going to continue to look at is enrollment and as schedules start coming out, but that's not going to happen before March 1st.
But to add to that, Roxanne, to one extent, I don't want to discount the fact that, you know, the board should have some involvement in if they choose.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt, yeah.
Something up as a priority.
Exactly, like we always do.
Absolutely, but I want to make sure.
And I'll have my worksheet, color coded, so that I can then do the adjustments.
I appreciate that.
We always do that, we cut and paste items and.
I appreciate that clarification.
I think the, the reference, what the, the reference is, and I don't want to speak for Roxanne, is just that we tried to consolidate it as I shared with you.
No, you always do a great job of doing it, I just want to make sure everyone's aware in like you say, TV land.
Oh, absolutely, in TV land, I also, I think we communicated through a variety of avenues, even to staff and my Monday message, which I know I also sent to all of you, is that this year is a unique process and I've been saying all along that, you know, that we know what we know, but there's a lot that we don't know. So the fact is that we're not going to know that information until after we have to submit a budget to the mayor. So a lot of our work is going to come probably on the back end of the process, rather, rather than on the front end of the process.
Right.
That's fair, yep, I covered it all.
So yeah, no, I totally agree, and I'll have the, I have my spreadsheet ready to go already, so we could do like we always do every year, just throw out something. What does that mean, what does that turn it to?
Yeah, right, right, from a percentage perspective.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I, I have one kind of comment, I'd like the board kind of input on this. In, in looking at, and I respect what's done already, but in looking at the food service budgets, if we're going to budget 118,000, I would think for now, I'd want to see it in our budget as, because that's what we have right now, that's what we know, and if we're going to continue down that, I don't want that to be a surprise after the fact.
I kind of agree with you there.
The only question I would say is, I would wait for that final number until the February operations meeting, which gives us plenty of time.
But we have a budget in here, right? So that's going to be our contribution for the year.
But again, that number wasn't accurate, if you, Alan mentioned that the, if you're not going to go out to bid, the, the staff that was going to retire was not going to retire.
Then add 39,000 back.
And then also, he has new budget projections that are looking favorable that will reduce it.
But if we're going to do a budget internally.
Then he'll adjust his budget.
We should adjust the budget, because if we're going to do a budget and we're going to stay with this, they're going to assume they're not going to retire.
What I'm, I think we're saying the same thing, is what I'm suggesting, both have to match up, but right now, it's premature for me to put the 118, because I don't believe it'll be 118.
Okay, put 80.
Okay, I'll do whatever, but I just don't think it's.
120 minus 40 is 80, I mean, I think we need something in there.
Okay.
Because that's what we have right now. Does anyone disagree with that or, no, no, no really comment?
My hope is it goes, my hope is that it goes down, that's my hope, so.
No, as do we, but I, I just think we need, if we're going to continue down the path and we're not going to go out, if we don't go out to bid.
So we could add 80.
We're going to be surprised with a $100,000 hit after the fact.
So we would add 80 to 890F in the budget, so 80,000. Shawna?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, my throat's scratchy, but no, I agree with Mike, because it does it affects our percentage points on our strategic plan, it affects everything.
It's going to affect everything, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
They just took away.
So, I mean, yeah, you just took away, yeah, took, took the wood out of his sails and it's.
No, it's okay, it's all right.
I'm debating with Alan tomorrow anyway.
I was hoping that the number would be lower, so I'm just trying to avoid having to do multiple entries.
I mean, I see it as a place card holder almost more than anything, that's the way I see it, more than anything.
That's our only known.
It's, it's an arbitrary number, 80,000 to a degree, but at least it's not zero. And, and you're right, you're not balanced, yeah.
So yes, so we'll just make sure that Alan.
Right.
Updates the budget appropriately too.
And will you also update us on the school resource officer?
Conversation, yeah, I'll give you all that updates.
And is it possible too, if they can't fund, you know, the full amount, could we go like halves?
That's what we had asked last year, so. Yeah, I'll take a quarter, I'll take, you know, not at literally 25 cents, but quarter, 25%. But, so yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk about it from a variety of angles.
Anything else? All right, thank you to everyone on central office and everyone that helped out in the budget for the various buildings, so thank you to all the administrators and everyone that participated. All right, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.